Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this December 20th in 2022. We have made it, guys. This is our last hearing of the year, yes, and getting ready to go into the holidays. And hopefully, this will be a smooth zoning hearing. In lieu of a pastor providing our invocation today, we will have a moment of silence. And following that, I will lead us together in the Pledge of Allegiance. For those of you willing and able, please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. May I rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is now officially called to order. I will turn things over to John Peterson, our zoning manager, who will walk us through today's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process of procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We ask that when your case is called, the applicant please stand up and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. Then after that, we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand up and raise their hands. After recognizing both parties, they will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So you would need to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes total, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are five cases on today's agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice. These cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-58 of 2022, Polty Home Company. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice. It will not be heard. Next case is resounding case Z-80 of 2022, Renata Dinez. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-85 of 2022, American Contractor Supply LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. LUP 26 of 2022, Anthony Castecchi. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice. It will not be heard. And finally, other business item number 58 of 2022, Axian U.S. LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held. And these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-55 of 2022, Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued by the staff until the February 7th, 2023, Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-55 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-59 of 2022, Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z-59 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-60 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-61 of 2022, Green Community Development LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z-61 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-65 of 2022, Drakeback Investments LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-65 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-67 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-71 of 2022, Hamilton Homes Holdings LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-71 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-72 of 2022, Rockbuild Homes LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-72 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-77 of 2022, Lidl U.S. Operations LLC, Deborah Pyburn. This case was continued by the staff until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-77 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-78 of 2022, Todd Woodruff. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-78 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-81 of 2022, Prime Properties Nine LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-81 will not be heard today. LUP 21 of 2022, Roger Alexander. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP 21 will not be heard today. LUP 23 of 2022, Coiman, Aliado, Mazareos Reyes. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP 23 will not be heard today. LUP 24 of 2022, Claudia Escobar. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP 24 will not be heard today. SLEP 11 of 2022, Glenside Mapleton LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So SLEP 11 will not be heard today. SLEP 16 of 2022, Hales of Georgia Incorporated. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP 16 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get some requests to continue some other cases that are on today's agenda that were going to be heard. First case, this one needs to be continued by the staff. Other business item number 48, Alva Glass. The applicant has revised their plan, Madam Chair and Board, so the staff would ask this to be continued until your March 21st, 2023 Planning Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
I'd like to make a motion that we hold OB 48 of 2022 until the March 21st, 2023 hearing date.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next case is other business item number 56, Stein Investment Group. The applicant is working through the Architecture Control Committee, Madam Chair and Board, so we would need to continue this case until the February 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. I would like to submit the letter from Mr. Garvis Sands, December 19th, and also make a motion to continue this until the February VOC zoning.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
And lastly, we did get a request last Friday. The applicant would like to continue resounding case Z-76, Vasco Properties LLC, until your February hearing date.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
I'm not willing to support this request. This request came in on Friday, which is after the Wednesday deadline. We have significant opposition to this case, and they are here and present, so I'd rather have it heard.
Okay. Erica, thank you.
Okay, before we get going on consent, I do have a couple more announcements to make. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your phones on mute. When the phones ring, they do interfere with the broadcasting presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution of $250 or more within two years of this date to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the backup room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for December 20th, 2022. First case on consent is resounding case Z-56 of 2022, Ice and Chetty. Request rezoning from R-30 to R-20 for single-family residences in Land Lot 321 of the 19th District. Property is located on the west side of West Santan Road, north of Friendship Church Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-56 to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, District Commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number two, applicant must provide an updated site plan to stormwater management showing water quality calculations and construction details for stormwater collection and treatment system as an express condition before the issuance of a building permit. Number three, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number four, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. Number five, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-56?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-64 of 2022, Alliance Industrial Partners LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 to LI for a warehouse in Land Lot 705 of the 18th District. Property is located on the east and west side of Factory Shaw's Road, north of Six Legs Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-64, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the District Commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number two, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number three, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. Number four, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. Number five, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Number six, allow parking lot to be located on a separate lot. And number seven, subject to the letter dated December 7th, 2022 from Dana A. Spots. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-64?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-74 of 2022, Building New Pathways LLC. Request rezoning from O-N-I to CRC for office and retail in Land Lot 804 of the 17th District. Property is located on the northwest side of North Park Place, on the north side of Windy Hill Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-74 to the CRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, District Commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number two, variance as stated in the zoning comments. Number three, adherence to landscape enhancement strip regulations. Number four, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number five, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. Number six, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-74?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-79 of 2022, Seven Oaks Stables LLC. Request rezoning from R-15 with stipulations to R-15 with stipulations for amending previous zoning conditions to allow an equestrian facility in Land Lots 257 and 320 of the 17th District. Property is located on the southeast side of Cooper Lake Road, west of Civitania Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-79 to the R-15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, District Commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number two, District Commissioner to approve riding stable elevations. Number three, County Arborists to approve the landscape buffer plan. Number four, all horses shall be maintained at least 10 feet from all property lines. Number five, variances as stated in the zoning comments. Number six, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number seven, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. Number eight, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. Number nine, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Number 10, inclusion on the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners zoning here on December 20th, 2022. Number 11, additional buildings for equipment storage and for hay storage will be of the same material and architecture as the barn. Any other buildings greater than 750 square feet require approval by the VOC through another business item. Number 12, elevations for the barn as provided by Mr. Starthaw, with color being brown and gray, and the roof of a similar color and a non-reflective coating. Number 13, maximum of 12 stalls in the barn. Number 14, maximum for events annually. Events should be defined as attendance of more than 25 people. Number 15, Landscape Review Committee for the Cooper Lake Road frontage to include fencing and shrubbery intended to adequately safeguard courses while providing an attractive view shed from the road. The committee would be composed of the applicant, the Mapleton Improvement Coalition, and the Cobb County Community Development Department. Number 16, pavement for the first 60 feet on East driveway. Gravel is accepted past that point. Number 17, lighting design so as not to impact neighbors with appropriate shielding to ensure light does not escape property. And number 18, use is specific for this applicant and use only. Any change in either requires a new zoning application. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-79?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like, excuse me, I would like to make a motion to amend DOT comments to reflect that the curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the Cooper Lake Road frontage are weighed for this applicant and for this use only, and to also include the letter of agreeable stipulations dated December 13th, 2022, from Robert Swartow.
Thank you. Personally, I'm not supportive of removing the sidewalks, but this is included in the consent agenda, so you don't have to move for this to occur. We'll vote on this in-bank with all the other items. So you're just adding this as a stipulation to the case, presuming that we'll vote on it altogether.
But this is additional stipulation that she's just adding it on to the stipulation?
Right. She presented it as a motion, and I was saying that we don't need to vote on adding that separately. We'll vote on all of them together.
To amend, go ahead.
Commissioner.
This is a question for the county attorney. But staff comments state that the applicant has to put in curb, gutter, and sidewalks. Therefore, Commissioner Sheffield's stipulation is to remove that. Therefore, shouldn't it require a vote of the board to agree to add that stipulation, or to essentially remove staff comments?
Particularly since it's a development standard.
Standard, and we could go through that process and ask for it to be changed like that. That'd be perfectly appropriate. I mean, my understanding is that she was accepting, that she was changing it to the new stip. All of these stips are as previous to design, but we could have her add it. If the board wishes to do that, sure.
Yes, she can add something that contrasts to staff's opinion without a separate motion to add that as a stipulation. We've done that many times before, even in contrast to a development standard.
Okay, so just simply just amend the stipulation, okay? Do I need to reread that for the record?
Sure.
Okay. Did you have something?
I just had a question. Was there a fee in lieu of, if you're removing the...
No, for this applicant, just for backdrop, his plan is to have an equestrian facility. And as I read through the development standards as it relates to sidewalks, the inference that I made from the development standards is for a development. Now, this particular property was zoned R-15 for a subdivision, which is not going to happen. So typically, when we have subdivisions, as you know, we'll have sidewalks within the community and also outside of the community. But for this particular use, I am making, amending it to waive the sidewalks for the frontage of the equestrian facility.
But we do require sidewalks on the frontage for commercial as well as residential, correct?
Right, but this is not commercial. This is zoned R-15, which recreational uses are included in R-15.
I got you.
Right.
Okay, just piggybacking Commissioner Burrell's comments, when we don't have sidewalks developed, we often add fees in lieu of developing the sidewalks, and that will go into a sidewalk fund. So this is waiving both of those things.
Well, the challenge here also is this was zoned R-15 for a subdivision. So the application is to remove those stipulations. So if it was not zoned for a subdivision, he wouldn't need to do sidewalks. So it wouldn't even be before us.
We understand. It's just staff may recommend that irrespective of the development standard. So it's not necessarily because it's not R-15. We are removing a stipulation that was there on the property. And it's okay, you're able to do that.
Sure.
It's just that it is today practice of ours to acquire sidewalks, again, irrespective of residential or commercial, and it can be done beyond the development standard. Just because the development standard states something doesn't mean that we are beholden only to that development standard. But I get what you're doing. I'm not necessarily in support of it, but I get what you're doing. You're able to add that on, and we can vote on it.
Right, and you know, and just thinking along Cooper Lake Road, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, it's a very windy road. It's a very windy road. There is some sidewalk there, but I don't think that it's really a safe street to walk on, to be honest.
But the reality is residents do, because it's a residential area. And I live off of Cooper Lake, and I know residents would appreciate to see the continuation of that. Anyway, we are not here to debate something on consent, or else we're going to pull this and put this on our regular agenda. My only point is that you are able to add that as a stipulation. No separate motion is needed.
Okay.
I will state, again, my plan was not to debate this here, but to put it in my comments until other commissioners have questions. But...
Okay.
Gamble?
I was just going to share with, you know, the way equestrian facilities have been developed in my area. And typically, even though there's an underlying zoning category to that, they allow the equestrian use to go there, but the sidewalk is not a requirement of the development unless they come back and ask to do something in additional to the stable, which Commissioner Sheffield has covered in her motion, or her change of her stipulations.
Understood, but this is a highly residential area in contrast to many areas in District 1, which you have provided in many instances, is of lesser density. This is a more dense residential area that will have the benefit of having a less developed parcel, which the residents seem to be amenable to. But this is not comparing apples to apples. Okay, we can move on to the next case, please.
Okay. All right, next case is resounding case Z-82 of 2022, Alicia Scott. Request rezoning from NS to NRC for daycare in Land Lot 630 of the 19th District. Property is located on the south side of Milford Church Road and on the north side of Old Milford Church Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-82 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 25th, 2022, with the District Commissioner approving the final plan. Number two, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number three, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. Number four, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. Number five, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Number six, site plan review Arborists comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-82?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed.
There's a question by the two commissioners. Commissioner Burrell had her hand raised, and Commissioner Sheffield has a comment.
Is this deleting to LRO, or is it NRC?
NRC.
Okay. And staff recommended deletion to LRO?
Yeah, Planning Commission recommended approval of NRC. And either one would work for this property.
Okay.
Is there an additional comment, Commissioner?
No, I just wanted to clarify what it was.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Sheffield?
Also, John, I need to add a stipulation for DOT, a DOT stipulation.
Okay.
That any change to the drop-off and pickup plan will require a traffic circulation and queuing plan to approve by Cobb DOT.
All right, got it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. All right, next case is resounding case Z-83 of 2022, White Road LLC. Request rezoning from LI and R-20 to LI for an office warehouse in Land Lot 682 and 683 of the 18th District. Property is located on the southeast side of Factory Shaw's Road and on the northeast side of White Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-83 to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 6th, 2022, with the District Commissioner to approve minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 28th, 2022. Number three, building architecture to be approved by the District Commissioner. Number four, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number five, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. Number six, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-83?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-84 of 2022, Jeff Jensen. Request a rezoning from GC to LI for an office, parking, and equipment storage in Land Lot 285 of the 17th District. Property is located on the south side of South Cobb Drive, west of the terminus of Henry Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-84 to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 6th, 2022, with the District Commissioner to approve minor modifications. Number two, setback variances as stated in the zoning comments as they pertain to the existing building footprint. Any new buildings to meet the zoning code for building setbacks. Number three, areas used for parking and/or maneuvering of vehicles and/or equipment to be paved to the extent or if recommended by Cobb DOT or Stormwater Management. Number four, code compliant 50-foot landscape screening buffer to be installed only where site abuts a property which is both residentially zoned and there currently exists a residential structure. Number five, access to the site from Henry Street and local roadway to be prohibited or restricted if recommended by Cobb DOT. Number six, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number seven, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. Number eight, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. And number nine, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-84?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-86 of 2022, Cumberland Used Auto Parts LLC. Request rezoning from HI in R-15 to HI for an auto salvage and storage business. Used auto parts sales, used auto sales in Land Lot 1137 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Gresham Road, east of Fairview Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-86 to the HI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 28th, 2022. Number two, the existing access and entrance drive are to be maintained, subject to Department of Transportation comments. Number three, the existing tree line on Gresham Road to remain in place as a buffer as it concerns that property, or, excuse me, as it concerns that portion of the property. Number four, no storage of vehicles to occur in the subject area of the rezoned tract. Number five, there is to be no intensified use or expansion of operations, even though it's permitted under... it's permitted under HI that will occur in the subject area of the rezoned tract. Number six, any improvements or additions in the rezoned tract would need to be submitted pursuant to a site plan and landscape plan to be approved by the district commissioner. And number seven, all staff comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-86?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda, LUP 25 of 2022, Living Hope Lutheran Church, request a temporary land use permit for an early childhood learning center in landlot 201 of the 20th District. Property is located on the west side of Mac Dobbs Road, the north side of Stilesboro Road, northwest of the intersection of Mac Dobbs Road and Stilesboro Road. The Plan Commission recommends approval of LP 25 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 5th, 2022. And number two, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 25?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 27 of 2022, Shory Moss, request a temporary land use permit for cat breeding and landlot 692 of the 19th District. Property is located on the north side of Chauncey Lane at the terminus of Oak Leaf Court. Plan Commission recommends approval of LP 27 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no customers, and number two, no signs. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 27?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda, SLUP 17 of 2022, Cumberland Used Auto Parts LLC, request a special land use permit for an auto salvage and storage yard, used auto part sales and used auto sales and landlot 1137 of the 16th District. Property is located on the north side of Gresham Road, east of Fairview Street. The Plan Commission recommends approval of SLUP 17, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the restrictions and conditions contained in the approval of Z-86 of 2022. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 28th, 2022. Number three, the existing tree line on Gresham Road along the entire side of the property to remain in place as a buffer. And number four, all staff comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 17?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. SLUP 18 of 2022, Pat Spencer, U-Haul Company of Atlanta West, request a special land use permit for a self-storage truck and trailer rental and retail in landlot 564 and 565 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Pymont Road, east of Kenton Road. The Plan Commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, special land use permit is only for the GC zone property. Number two, final site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Number three, building architecture to be approved by the district commissioner. And four, hours of operation to be approved by the district commissioner. Number five, Kenton Road design guidelines must be met. Number six, any trucks or vans for rent must be parked within the building setbacks and only within the property that is owned general commercial. Number seven, any work to automobiles related to installing hitches must be done inside the building. Number eight, fire department comments or recommendations. Number nine, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number 10, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. And number 11, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 18?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business items on the consent agenda. First one is other business item number 64 of 2022, which is to consider a reduction of required minimum public road frontage for Michael Chase from 75 feet to 49 feet for combined lots, for combined tracks two and three. The property is located at the northern terminus of Spring Lake Drive, southwest of Cedar Forks Trail. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. Number two, Department of Transportation comments contained in the other business packet. Number three, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number four, proposed site plan contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 64?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 67 of 2022 is to consider a reduction of required minimum public road frontage on track one for Barbara W. Ward from 50 feet to 12 feet, and reduce the side setbacks from 12 feet to eight feet, which is existing for that house. The property is located at the northern terminus of Summit Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November 10th, 2022, that shows the road frontage setback reductions. Number two, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. And number three, no further subdivision of this property. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 67?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 68 of 2022 is to consider a reduction of required minimum public road frontage on lots one through three for McKinley Homes LLC from 75 feet to zero feet. The property is located on the west side of West Centon Town Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November 10th, 2022, that shows the road frontage reductions. Number two, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. And number three, no further subdivision of this property. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 68? We have one person opposed, Madam Chair. So we'll pull that one off consent and put it into regular order. Okay, and next item is other business item number 69 of 2022, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Furniture and Mattress Warehouse LP regarding rezoning applications Z-25 of 2021. The property is located on the south side of Pymont Road and on the east side of Bellis Prairie Road in landlot 642 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter from Mr. Adam J. Rosen dated December 14th, 2022, which includes the site plan and building elevations, with the district commissioner approving the final site plan and building elevations. Number two, shared parking study by A&amp;R Engineering dated December 13th, 2022. Number three, fire department comments or recommendations contained in the other business packet. Number four, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. Number five, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. And number six, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 69?
No.
Okay, let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Burrell has a comment.
I would just like to add for the record, an email dated December 15th from Bellis Prairie Civic Association recommending approval from BFCA Delacour Subdivision and Kendrick Farms.
That's all. And I have another one.
Thank you. That's all.
Right, thank you. Next item is other business item number 70 of 2022, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment from Mapleton CGB Georgia LLC regarding rezoning application Z-163 of 2005, property located on the east side of Floyd Road and on the west side of White Boulevard, north of Nick and Jack Road, in landlots 31 and 42 of the 17th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on November 15th, 2022, with the district commissioner approving the final site plan. Number two, district commissioner to approve the final building elevations. Number three, water and sewer comments contained in the other business packet. Number four, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number five, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 70?
John, just an observation, I believe the description on the screen is not the proper description of this application.
That's correct, that's not the right one.
Okay.
That's from the previous case.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. Also, John, and the clerk, I'd like to include the letter of agreeable stipulations from Parks Huff dated December 20th, 2022.
Okay. Got it, okay. And Madam Chair and Board, that completes consent agenda with that one item being taken off consent regarding OB 68.
Okay, I believe Commissioner Richardson has a couple of additions.
I would like to just add one, OB 66 to consent.
Other business item number 66 is a consider request for Lamar Advertising regarding an oversized sign face replacement located on the easterly side of I-285 and on the north side of Church Road. The property is located in landlot 761 of the 17th District. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicants are here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 66?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed.
We have a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Burrell.
There was no opposition, but that's just a variance for the 500 feet from a residence?
Yeah, it's the same billboard as before, it's changing the face with the lumen saying the same, from what I understand.
Okay.
It's reducing four of them or something.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, Commissioner? You have a...
Okay, do we need to vote to add that to consent?
Well, we need to vote to add that to consent, and then after that, we're going to have to put some conditions on your approval. It should be to the signed permit application that's in the other business packet for OB 66.
Did you get that?
Okay. I'll do my best and just correct me if I say anything correctly. A motion to add OB 66 to the consent agenda with the following stipulations as pertains to...
Subject to the signed permit application contained in the other business packet.
That. And with all other staff comments and, well, yeah, all their staff comments.
All right, I'll second that. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner Burrell?
Since this is another business, does staff recommend approval?
Yes.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Commissioner Richardson, you can go ahead with your other addition. Did you have two?
No.
Just the one? Okay. Are there any other additions to be made or modifications to consent? Hearing done. Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as has been revised, recognizing that OB 68 will be moved to regular, and just ask the clerks to note my opposition to removing the sidewalks off of Z-79 and removing the fee in lieu of sidewalks. Commissioner Burrell, did you have a position?
I'm not in opposition to Z-79, but I do, for the record, would recommend fee in lieu of, if you're waiving the sidewalk.
Would you like that added to the record, Commissioner?
Yeah, just like a clerk's note or just... That would be my recommendation, but I don't oppose it.
And I'll just add, it's a typical practice for us to wave sidewalks and also the fee, and that it's my suggestion that this be not be a repeated practice. Okay. So the motion and a second, any further discussion? Call the question. Oh, I'm sorry, there was no second. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We did have discussion, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. For everyone here who was a part of the consent agenda, you are free to leave at this time unless you are here on behalf of the case or to oppose other business 68. We will hear that towards the end of today's meeting. Thank you, and for those who are leaving, I hope you have a happy holidays.
I'll go ahead and read the introduction in, Bill. I'm going to read the introduction in, and then you take it in there, okay? All right, next case on the agenda, we're going to go to the pending case, which is Z-38 of 2022, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. The applicant is asking for rezoning from R-30 to R-15 OSC, which has been revised to R-20 OSC, for a single-family subdivision in landlots 8 and 9 of the 18th District, landlots 1251, 1266, 1267, 1268, 1269, 1322, 1323, 1324, and 1325 of the 19th District. Property is located on the east and west side of Brown Road, north of Stout Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-38? The record shows one person opposed.
Board, I just remind you, the last time that we heard this was in November, and there was a motion to approve with conditions made by Commissioner Sheffield. At that point in time, Commissioner Burrell was not here. The vote came down 2-2. Pursuant to our rules, a tie vote shall remain pending before the board and then come back before the board at the next scheduled hearing. So at this point in time, it's up to Commissioner Burrell, which I believe that she said you've reviewed the record and watched the entire hearing, is that correct? It's up to her to cast her vote, and obviously, the hearing's closed, there's no more comments or pieces related to that.
With that, Bill, may she cast her vote at this time?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
First of all, I did watch the hearing a couple of times, and I will now cast my vote.
Okay. Commissioner Burrell cast a vote of no. I believe that the motion for that application has been denied. 3-2, or...
It fails. The matter's still before the board.
Okay, thank you. So I will turn things back over to Commissioner Sheffield.
Yeah, sure. So at this time, I'd like, oh, excuse me. At this time, I'd like to make a substitute motion. Bill, would it be appropriate to have conversation at this time? Because I'd like to really give the applicant some direction on moving forward for February, if the board agrees to hold it.
You can call the applicant back up related to that, or you can go ahead and make, it'd be preferable for you to make a motion, get a second, and then, or if you need to be informed by the applicant material and what he has to say, then you can speak with the applicant before making your second motion, yes?
Okay. All right, well, I make a substitute motion to hold Z-38 to the BOC, February 14, 2023 zoning hearing. And that's my motion. I know that, and I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask the commissioner why she denied it, or if I should just give direction, because it seems like stormwater was an issue.
It would not necessarily be appropriate, but she can obviously volunteer if she wants to. There's a motion, it has not been seconded yet. After they're seconded, you can have discussion.
Okay. All right, so then I have the motion, and we'll just second for discussion if we can.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. And I believe we have a question for clarification on process.
Yeah, so if an application's denied, then you can do an amended motion afterwards for a hold.
It's not an amended motion, the matter's still before the board, it's a brand-new motion. There could be additional motion to amend it with different conditions, be a motion to deny it, or the whole array of different motions that are allowed under the rules, which could be to hold. I think Commissioner Sheffield would probably explain why that would be her preference at this time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Go ahead, okay, Commissioner. Commissioner Gambrill.
Commissioner Sheffield, I would support this hold. My only question would be, is can we see a yield plan of how many lots under the existing zoning could be built? Which, for the audience, that means the floodplain, while floodplain can be allowed in a lot, the lot still has to be a viable lot, and it could potentially have some floodplain. But I would like to see a yield plan that would show us how many homes could be developed as zoned, following all of our development standards.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell.
Yes. My concerns were the stormwater and runoff, and also the flooding in the area, the density... The density. You're going from R-30 to R-20 OSC. And the lot sizes are reduced from what is existing at 30,000 square feet to 13,000. In addition to what Commissioner Gamble is requesting, I would like to see also a straight R-20 with 20,000 square foot lots as well. To see if that's viable and no variances.
Are there any other comments or suggestions?
You can call the applicant, sure.
Mister applicant, Kevin, can you take your mic? Thank you, Kevin.
Good morning.
Good morning. So you had an opportunity to hear the feedback from some of my fellow board members and the request is to have a revised site plan for R-20 and to calculate how many homes will yield on both an R-20 and under the existing zoning, which is R-30.
Correct.
Is that something? And to also, you know, in reading through the stormwater runoff, and I read through stormwater comments again on last night and it appears that for all that was submitted, it met the county codes and the requirements and the updated stormwater procedures. So, you know, I'll leave it to the applicant to revisit the stormwater and runoff. I understand that there will be two lakes on the property as well and stormwater will have piping underground. But if you can get with the applicant to revisit the stormwater issues and the runoff and also the site plan, is that something that you guys would be amenable to?
Yes, we'll have the two plans that have been requested by the respective commissioners prepared and circulated and submitted, as well as follow-up discussions with Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I have another suggestion for our applicant. We have a member of the nearby community who's here in opposition and has sent us emails. Can you also include him in your correspondence prior to the next hearing so that there is some awareness of what you'll be providing us? I think what we're looking for is just some assurances that we won't be contributing to increase stormwater in the area.
Sure, Mr. Rice would be more than happy to include him. We've communicated often, so yes, be happy to.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. So there was a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
This is till February? This is being held till February?
Yes. All right, call the question. The motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Madam Chair and Board, the next zoning case has a companion special-annuals permit case with it. Would it be the board's desire to hear both cases together and then just make separate motions on both cases? Okay. I'll call them together. Rezoning case Z-66 of 2022, ADP Terrill Mill LLC. Request rezoning from R-80 to CRC for a climate-controlled self-storage facility in land lot 936 of the 17th District. Property is located on the west side of Terrill Mill Road and on the south side of Delk Road, together with its companion special-annuals permit, SLEP 14 of 2022, ADP Terrill Mill LLC. Request a special-annuals permit for a climate-controlled self-storage in land lot 936 of the 17th District. Property is located on the west side of Terrill Mill Road and on the south side of Delk Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Z-66 or SLEP 14? Please stand up. One, okay. Let the director show there's one person opposed. Would you please come forward to be sworn in?
Just for count, is there anyone here in support? Is there anyone here in support, just from a count perspective?
Is there anyone here in support of these two cases? Please stand up, raise your hands. Can you stand it one more time if you're in support? Five? Okay, let the director show there's five people here in support of these two cases. Six? Let the director show there's six people here opposed in support of these two cases.
Kevin. It's my understanding from CP that the timer is not working on the podium.
Okay.
I'll try to give you a countdown, maybe around two, then a one. Although I think you naturally talk in 10-minute increments, so...
Right. I only speak in 10-minute bursts, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Bill.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, ADP Terrill Mill, in this application for rezoning, really also known as Shamrock Building Systems, which has been a longtime company here in Cobb County that is a developer and builder of climate-controlled self-storage facilities. And they've done an excellent job and have deservedly earned a reputation for the quality that they bring. I'm also here representing the owner of this two-and-a-half-acre property that's located at the intersection of Delk Road and Terrill Mill Road. The owner is the estate of Ms. Ruby Frydell, who has been a longtime resident, or was a longtime resident, and really beloved by her neighbors in this area. This application has had quite a bit of discussion with the community. But to kind of highlight the property for you, you see it there in the middle. It's currently zoned R-80, which is there at the intersection of Delk Road, which you see running through the middle, as well as Terrill Mill Road, which is on that right-hand side where this property is located. The surrounding area, as you can see, it's adjacent to a GC piece of property. That's a general commercial shopping center. That's a public shopping center. That's a large public shopping center. That is a heavy, intense commercial use there to the west of this property. Across Delk Road, at the same exact intersection, you see that it's zoned LRC, which is a limited retail commercial, as well as NRC for neighborhood retail commercial. That's for uses of a bank, a Zaxby's, and a Walgreens drugstore directly across Delk Road. You can see the activity that takes place there from a commercial standpoint. But where this property sits also is where the residential area of Terrill Mill also comes to this side. To the south, you have a suburban condominium, that's Cobblestone Walk. Across Terrill Mill Road to your right on your right-hand screen, that's Mill Ridge Subdivision. And then also, you'll see towards the bottom, the R-40, that's the beginning of the Terrill Mill Estates neighborhood as well. We have been in close contact and engagement with those three neighborhoods throughout this process. That engagement has been mutual. It's been one where they engaged with us and we were able to engage with them and had multiple conversations, multiple meetings, and exchanged a great deal of information. But more importantly, for this applicant, and I really want to emphasize, what this applicant has been able to do from beginning till end has been able to accept that information, accept that conversation, accept that input, and incorporate it. And that's why, I can stand here today and as we stood before, those neighborhoods have been supportive of this application as it now stands. They didn't start that way. They wanted their input, deservedly so, had some questions and some good concerns. But through the efforts of the applicant and these neighborhoods and that level of engagement, what's occurred is an application that has evolved and been dynamic over time. And the applicant's taken those comments, taken those concerns, and made multiple changes to accommodate that, to reach this point. And I think that's a testament to the process and to the process that we have. Again, you can see where the property is situated. That is a signalized intersection there at Terrill Mill and Delk Road. Terrill Mill at that location, if you don't know, is a median highway essentially at that location. Turning to the site plan itself, this is the proposed site plan. You can now see in more detail the proposed building. I want to highlight a couple of things, and these also will highlight the changes that were made. Starting kind of at the top at the corner, there is an identified tree save area. There's some existing old specimen trees that are located there. That was one of the requests that they were able to accommodate through shifting the site plan and adjusting their site plan to create that tree save area. In addition to the rear, we've established a very dense 50-foot, fully landscaped and natural buffer to the existing residential to our south. Likewise, that is a part of the information and a part of the plan that was incorporated. Also, you'll see that all of the activity, the parking and so forth, is to the left-hand side of the site plan. That's adjacent to the shopping center. That's the rear of the shopping center where we put our activity to move it away from the neighborhood side. Again, an intentional revision to this plan as we move through this process. We've also submitted a preliminary landscape plan to show and highlight the extent to which we were willing, and this particular applicant was willing, to add landscaping and to create a specific look and to create a heavy and intense and dense landscaping plan to, number one, really address the road frontage on Delk Road as you turn to Terrill Mill Road, to really enhance the Terrill Mill Road sides so that you have a very, you know, just a nice, robust landscaping plan that will present both fencing and landscaping for these road frontages and present the type of look that is requested by the neighborhoods. Also, you can see the intensity of the landscape buffer being presented by this plan. But most importantly, what has really transformed this application has been the applicant's efforts in the look, in the appearance. Rather than a boxy type of climate-controlled self-storage facility, what was requested was, how do we make this residential? Or even can you, are you willing to do something like that, knowing that it comes with an enormous cost? And this applicant was willing to do that, so that when you look at this building, you don't think climate-controlled self-storage facility. It looks and feels much more residential, much more fitting in with the neighborhood in terms of its roofline, in terms of its architectural elements and design, and in terms of its materials. And you can start to see really how that comes together, including the landscaping and fencing along the street frontage. This also includes elements such as the signage, which again, is going to be restricted, very much so in keeping with the idea that this is entering a neighborhood once you get past the corner and the traffic light, but also is facing out onto Delk Road at this location. So we have multiple stipulations and conditions that limit the type, style, size, color of signage at this location, including such things as adding that the signs won't be backlit, they're going to be lit by gooseneck lighting as opposed to having backlit type of signage. Again, it's a means of addressing concerns so that the entirety of the project fits within what the community engagement brought us, and that is these ideas and suggestions. Again, even the rear has windows, has architectural elements that will actually be very much screened by the landscaping that will be employed here. And again, we just want to show you all sides of this proposed project so that you can see the level of detail and engagement that occurred between this applicant and the community. Couple of the other things that I think are also vitally important in that regard are some of the special stipulations that we included that go beyond some of the standard ones that we're used to seeing. In this instance, we have stipulations related to security. We have stipulations related to more restrictive hours. Climate-controlled self-storage facilities typically have fairly standard types of hours and operating hours when it can be accessed versus when the actual office is open. But here, given the sensitivity and given our level of discussions, this applicant agreed to more restrictive hours than any other standard climate-controlled self-storage facility, even those in the immediate vicinity. Again, being sensitive to and incorporating the considerations of the neighborhood. Lastly, when we look at this piece of property, what's been, the only criticism that we have received has been, well, let's just stay residential. The issue here is the owner tried. This is an estate. A little less than two years ago, this estate went into contract with a developer client of mine even, a residential developer, one that has done multiple, multiple projects here in Cobb County at much far less of a purchase price, to try to develop this residentially. That developer went through this due diligence to try to do this residentially. At the end of the day, the developer terminated the contract. Why? Because it could not make residential work here. It was not economically viable as a project. This property is just too small, it's only two and a half acres. It just doesn't produce enough homes, be it townhomes or units, to offset the development costs and specifically to offset the impact of Delk Road and a shopping center. Once you try to get away from that, to put people in homes, you start to lose too much land, you start to lose too much in terms of the viability as an economic project. Residential simply doesn't work. What does work is a low-impact, low-intensity, climate-controlled self-storage facility that is unprecedented in its appearance and its engagement by the applicant with the neighborhood. And with that, respectfully request your approval, subject to our stipulation letter dated November 28th and any of all staff comments and recommendations as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from opposition.
Again, I believe the timer up there is not working, so our county attorney can help provide...
I'll try to give you a five and then two.
Oh, that's the problem. I won't take the 10 minutes, but thank you so much. I'm Kevin Nicholas and I live in Amberly Park, within walking distance of the facility. And first of all, I wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you for your service. And out of respect for Commissioner Richardson, this is in our district, so just wanted to acknowledge that. All right, well, I don't have a presentation like that. It was actually pretty nice. However, I am speaking on behalf of not only myself, but many other people who were not involved in this process. Amberly Park is within walking distance of the facility, the proposed facility. And, you know, it is a little troubling that we, as a broad community, have not been, I don't think, fully informed. However, I will give a shout out to the Powers Ferry Corridor Alliance, who has done a good job at least keeping the public informed. But I'm here to speak in opposition to it, and I represent a lot of people. Hopefully, you received a lot of emails on this, and if not, you probably will continue to receive some. But, and here's the opposition. The opposition really is because, well, to be frank, we don't need another self-storage facility in this area to support these residential communities, in our view. Last counts, I think, when I did a unscientific review, I think there was about eight, maybe to 10, within a couple miles radius of our homes. So, you know, I questioned the business model, but at the same time, you know, it's not my money. So I don't have to agree with the business model. But I will continue to add that this is a residential plot. Now, we take exception to the fact that this can't be, can't stay a residential area, especially since it really corners and it really is against our neighborhoods. It's not a commercial plot. It's a residential plot. So our request is to keep it residential. Now, we heard a number of times that that can't happen. And we beg to differ. Why can't it happen? We hear the development cost and all of this is too much. Well, there is two single-family homes there for a long, long time with some very nice people living there. I will, I'm not a developer, but I will say that right next door are very, very nice townhomes. In fact, you can, I don't know where it is on that map, but right behind it. So at a minimum, townhomes can at least be considered to keep it residential. Now, at the same time, since there is a plethora of storage, self-storage facilities in our area, a lot of neighbors I speak to and a lot of neighbors who have voiced their concern said if it does need to become a commercial property, then make it for, with amenities that really would serve the community where it's going to fall. So there's a lot of discussion about, okay, what could that be? Well, it could be a lot of things. It could be a coffee shop, it could be a cafe, it could be different things. Now, some people will also say about, oh, it's going to really, the increased traffic is going to be a problem. I got to tell you what, living there for 23 years with East Cobb Middle and Brumby, part of our community now, the schools, which we're proud to have, traffic is always a problem. Terrill Mill Road is a major artery and, you know, anything you put there, traffic is still going to be an issue. So our view is, keep it, and I speak for my neighborhood, Amberly Park and many others, keep it residential. keep it residential, because we don't need another self-storage area. Especially for that area, for those people, our neighbors don't use self-storage. Quite frankly, they just don't. So why not make it, if, keep it residential first of all, or if it needs to be converted to commercial down the line, let's make it something that's going to be suitable for the community. I cite the Powers Ferry master plan. That was put in place a long time ago, right? But the sense of it is still vibrant. We need master plans in order to govern the land use map. And that's exactly the heart of the discussion here. How do we preserve our community? Living there for 23 years, I can tell you that I'm very vested in preserving our sense of community. That doesn't mean stopping progress. What it means is being smart. And we believe being smart means no encroachment on our residential communities. And if it does have to eventually change to commercial, let's be more thoughtful about what goes in there. Now, I'll also say that a lot of work, looks like it's been put in, into this pla, into the plan, and it looks nice, but it's still a self-storage unit. Kind of looks like townhomes. Then let's make them townhomes. Let's still make it a self-storage unit. So I respectfully ask for myself and my neighbors, and by the way, a lot of people were trying to get here today, however, you know, due to the holidays and also due to work, a lot of people are out of town. So even though I'm the only person here, hopefully you've heard from a lot of people, and I respectfully ask that you preserve our community and we don't continue to have commercial encroachment on it, and do not support or deny this request. And with that, I wish you all happy holidays, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Just confirming, there's no one else here in opposition? Okay. Commissioner, I'll turn things over to you.
Sure. And I know everyone's received different emails. Certainly, I've received a lot of correspondence. There seems to be a difference between the correspondence from those that live adjacent to this property versus those that are a little bit of a distance from this property. And I really appreciate the collaboration that occurred as a part of this process, but I did want to open up the floor for other commissioners to provide their thoughts on the presentations.
Any commissioner willing to share?
Any.
Okay, why don't, just for formality, we'll go ahead and take a motion and then, yeah, discussion?
Okay. Well, my, my motion was actually to continue a little bit of conversation in the background, but I don't want to...
Sure, sure, let's do that then. This is yours, let's not get ahead of you if that's what you designed.
Okay. Commissioner Burrow?
For discussion. We did receive a lot of opposition emails on this from the community. We did receive one that I recall in favor, but more in favor today in, in person than I recall versus email. My concern with this is, well, first of all, I'm kind of confused on how it is R80 in MDR. That's very unusual to have an R80 residential in medium-density residential, which medium-density residential would be more townhomes. Yes, John?
And just to answer your question, Commissioner Burrow, the R80 is a holdover from our 72 map. This area was a lot of R80 and R40 50 years ago, and over time, it's transitioned into medium-density uses. And the board put this into medium-density probably in the 1990s. So the R80 and R40 has been, been zoned out of along this part of Terrill Mill Road. And this is the last piece.
Okay. Well, that's just, doesn't match to me. And you do have the homes right below it, Gaston Circle. I don't know if that was Mr. Nichols, Nichols?
He's about a mile or a half mile up north.
But my concerns are the variances on the storage facility. Yes, it does look nice, but I, I think I would be in, in support of this staying residential. If I don't support commercial there.
Commissioner?
The acreage, two and a half acres really isn't a lot, but I don't know what the acreage is on Gaston Circle with the five homes, but I would like to see it stay residential as well. That's all I have.
Commissioner Sheffield?
I'll just add, the presentations were great, and it is a nice-looking structure. I would support it also remaining residential, or if commercial, to add external amenities. And I heard a coffee shop and a cafe and some of the other external amenities that the immediate neighbors or the neighbors in the community would support or benefit from. That's all I have to add.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gambrell?
John, for clarification, is this future land used MDR or a CAC?
It's MDR for this piece of property.
Okay, it was confused, slightly confusing on the map with it being adjacent to the GC. I wasn't quite sure if it bled over into this parcel or not.
And I don't believe it bleeds over into this parcel.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the application, I agree. It is a very nice-looking building. I appreciate the applicant working with the community. I think that is critically important here. The one thing, as Commissioner Burrow said, if we could get rid of the variances, that would be a little bit easier. Again, I'm assuming the community that's here in support, are you adjacent to this parcel? They are adjacent to this parcel. So to me, I would support, given that they do have input from that, even though I understand Mr. Nichols' concern. And then, John, another question for a townhome community, is there a minimum acreage requirement?
For, for FST and the townhomes we have in RM8, the minimum acres is two acres.
Minimum is two. Okay, thank you.
Also, if I may, staff and PC recommended denial.
Thank you.
Sure. This is a tough zoning, Commissioner. It is rare. I don't think I've ever seen residents ever come out in support of a storage facility. I was going to see if pigs were flying outside. Oh, wow, she, there, excuse me, there was another one, maybe it's déjà vu. It's a beautiful storage facility. This is a very tough intersection, so even if you were to build residential here, I think it'd be a nightmare for residents, because if you ever, God forbid, had to make a left out onto Delk or Terrill Mill, you're, I mean, you're always going to have to make that right and then find your way through an obstacle or maze to get there. With that being said, I am sensitive to the comments made by opposition. I think there's a number of commercial uses that may be more neighborhood-oriented and suitable for that area than putting in a storage unit. I don't necessarily live right next door, and I know you have some in support who do, but I think moving so significantly from MDR to a use that's outside of the future land use map, it certainly should require some discourse and deliberation, which apparently you've had, but appear, also from the emails we received, there are others who are very concerned about that significant change. Personally leaning towards Commissioner Sheffield's comments, that I think some neighborhood-oriented commercial use may be more fitting. It might even be able to tie into the driveways that are adjacent to it so that there could be better accessibility to the roadways. Not necessarily in favor of storage personally. And as Commissioner Burrow did observe, it isn't, not only in contrast to the MDR, but staff and the PC did recommend denial.
All right. I really appreciate you all for sharing your commentary. Like I said, this, this is a unique case for me, because usually when there's denial from the staff, denial from PC, I'm not necessarily expecting the residents who live adjacent to the parcel to be in overwhelming support, or not, I'll say tempered support. I know that there's some, I know that everyone's really happy about the collaboration that occurred and the factoring in of all the suggestions. And certainly to Kevin's point, this is MDR in the future land use plan. I think that there are some real hesitations with MDR being in this intersection. One, the acreage is pretty small, and yes, the building looks like, like townhomes, but the parking requirements would be significantly different between self-storage and townhomes. We also know that that intersection is very busy, and it's a short term, so that, that traffic would be really, it would have a significant impact for some of the more intense commercial uses. I know that there have been desires in general for some meeting spaces. This was not necessarily my idea for this parcel, but I also understand the concerns about keeping things as low in intensity as possible for this corner. So that's really what I'm weighing out and trying to come to a final decision on. But I did have a question. I'm not sure if this has been considered. Kevin, can you please approach? With regards to the design of this, had there been any look into whether or not a portion of this could be used for community meeting space or, like, not a coffee shop per se, because that would create a little bit too much traffic, but had there been that type of consideration for the design on this parcel?
Not to date. It had not really been asked as far as specifically creating that, that element of space, but I wouldn't be surprised if, I mean, I know from a, you know, I know that the applicant would there, if that was requested, they're going to try to figure that out.
Okay.
They figured out everything else that's been requested of.
Okay. Because I know that that has come up in some of my conversations as well. Let's see. I, I just, yeah. I'm tempted to hold this for one more time, just so that we can have that follow-up conversation on that piece. I know I kind of mentioned it in our correspondence, but I think that there may be a way to satisfy the need of the community on that side and, and still honor the, the work that the community and the applicant has taken on with regard to this parcel, knowing the limitations of the future as well.
Okay.
Is that something you would be, be amenable to?
Absolutely.
So that is going to be my motion, is to hold this until February the 7th.
Is it any make two motions or two different?
Two motions for each one, yes. Okay. For Z66, my motion is to hold this case until the next zoning hearing in February...
21st.
21st, thank you. With the consideration of some of the more community meeting or community retail slash meeting aspects for this parcel.
Sure.
All right, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, commissioners. Merry Christmas.
Second for the SLEP, I'll just repeat it. We'll incorporate it for the next hearing. We'll incorporate it for the next hearing, but second motion for the SLEP 14 is to hold as well until the next zoning hearing, February 21st, in consideration of the Z66 application.
Second. Any discussion? Just note of observation, the SLEP analysis provides some helpful insight, or should be considered. All right, call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Next item is resounding case Z76 of 2022, Vasco Properties LLC, requesting a resoning from R30 to ONI for an Assembly Hall and Land Lot 12 of the 19th District. Property is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, West of Midway Road. Is that person present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z76? Please keep your hands raised. The director show there's seven people here opposed. All those who would like to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
I asked for a continuation on this case.
Excuse me, sir, please help me in gestating your name for the record.
Oh, I'm Elijah Tutt.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I asked for a continuation on this case because my client, they had a baby. The baby was supposed to be due, like, at the first of the year. The baby came early, and she's having complications. So I emailed Ms. Peyton about it immediately and asked, could we have a continuation on it? And I was told I need to come here and ask for it in person.
Okay, thank you. I will turn things over to you, Commissioner Gambrell.
Like I said, when I was notified of the continuance, I was not notified of the applicant's situation, but also the continuance was received after the Wednesday deadline. What I also considered is, this is the third application for this zoning on this property since I've been in office. So this is not the first time that this applicant has come forward requesting this app, this event center, and there has been multiple times, the same homeowners have been engaged and involved, and not once have they been contacted to discuss this prior to this. So when the continuance came in asking so that they could reach out to the adjacent homeowners, that, they've had multiple chances over the years to do so, and it hasn't been done to date. Staff and I have also spent much time with the applicant over the years discussing what could be done with their property. That was some of the things that I considered in denying the request for continuance, and therefore, I would like to have the case heard.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? It's a tough circumstance. I'll say Commissioner Burrow.
Can we hear it if the applicant is not here or representation is?
Representation is here, and I don't know to what level the applicant needed to be able to participate in it, but it's up to the board whether they grant the, ask for the continuance or not. Otherwise, go forward.
John, or is this to Jeannie? Was Mr. Tutt advised that we were not going to continue the case and it would be heard today?
No, he was, he was advised that he would have to come here in person and ask for it since it was after the D date.
Okay.
How, how many are here?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Sheffield.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So the purpose of you being here today was to, is to ask for a continuance?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you prepared to speak on this case on behalf of your client or just to continue?
No, I was just...
Because I don't want to, you know...
I was only, like I said, I sent an email to Ms. Peyton immediately, and that's when she notified me that, you know, I needed to be here in person to ask for it, and I know she CC'd Mr. Pedersen in it, and that was it.
Okay.
So I was not told anything about the case, you know, not prob, you know, having a possibility to be contained, anything like that. I was unaware.
Okay. So you would not be prepared to move forward with...
No, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
Because I honestly thought that the email that I sent was going, you know, was going to handle that, and then when she responded back, it was a day later that she responded, and she's always responded to the emails. I have no complaints about it, but she did, you know, she didn't state that to me.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
But I guess my question to you is, anything changed from the December 6th presentation that you did to the Planning Commission?
What do you mean as far as changed?
Well, because you're stating you're not prepared to present today, yet you presented...
Because that was not my intent of coming today. My intent today was to ask for a continuation in person, which was what I was told in an email.
Did you still have a comment?
I did. How many again were here, are here, present in opposition?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, okay.
You want to ask them?
Seven.
I have a procedural question. If we hold the case, would the applicant have the opportunity to present the case at a future hearing?
Well.
If we hear it?
No, I mean, no, if you wanted applicant to have an opportunity, well, besides through the representation, you would have to actually just continue the case.
And that's, I'm trying to be sensitive to the residents who are here, and I think the commissioner is as well. So if he doesn't present or provide a very brief presentation, we can still determine to hold it in light of the circumstances that were shared today. And when they come back, the applicant, procedurally, would they have opportunity to present the zoning case again in full for 10 minutes?
You had the opportunity to be able to continue the case for it to be able to be heard, or if you're saying you want to split up the hearing?
I'm not saying, I need, if we hold, whenever we hold a case and we come back to the next hearing, does the applicant usually present the case for 10 minutes again to the board?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you. I would be amenable then to give, to at least give the public the ability to address the matter to hear it, to hear it today.
May I ask a question also?
Bill, would there be an option at least to hear from the opposition without hearing from the applicant? I'm just concerned that if he's not prepared, I just don't want it to...
Okay. The opposition would be responding to whatever the applicant actually put forward. I mean, that's why it's sequenced that way. So without a presentation by the applicant, I don't know how the opposition would be able to respond.
Right. But based on some comments that were made earlier, this has been an ongoing application. So my thought is that the opposition will be, they pretty much know what they're opposing to. But it's just a question. I was just wondering because I am sensitive to their time as well.
Commissioner Sheffield, I would be willing to ask someone from the opposition to come forward if the board is agreeable to that and ask some questions. Can I have a representative?
Excuse me, excuse me. Before we do that, let's not go out of that order like that. I would still ask that the applicant be able to at least put this in context before we hear from anyone in opposition.
No, she's just asking if they're agreeable to...
Excuse me.
If they're going to speak to the, if they're going to speak to, excuse me, sir. If we're going to speak to the content of this, if we're just speaking procedurally from opposition, that's fine. I'm just concerned about us hearing the merits of opposition without hearing any merit from the applicant regarding the matter.
Then I would request that the applicant go ahead and do the presentation as he did at the January or the December 6th hearing and go ahead and hear the case.
Oh, excuse me. I would ask that.
Excuse me, sir. We're just talking about procedure here. We're just, please wait for me to ask you to speak before you speak.
Bill, were you going to share something?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Commissioner Gammel, did you have a procedural question about, to the opposition?
So we might, we're just going to go ahead and hear it because I know you were expressing concerns that if we brought opposition up to ask questions without the applicant having a chance to make their presentation. So at this time, from what I'm kind of hearing from the board, is we're going to go ahead and hear this and then take direction from there.
Yep. Okay. Sir, so at this time, we'd ask that you present what you can. If you don't have your presentation in full, at least summarize the application, just so we can queue up those who are here in opposition because...
I'm seriously not in any way, shape, form, or fashion prepared. Like, the email stated to come here to ask for the continuation.
And then the ask doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be granted. A ask can be...
I didn't know that, though.
Okay. I understand that, too. I understand what you're saying. And I can see where you're coming from, that you might have presumed that if you asked for it, you would have received it. But that's not necessarily the case. If, were you the presenter for this case in times past? Can you tell us?
Only the last time.
Can you tell us what this is about at all?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking for you to do. You don't have to provide us the entire presentation. A lot of us up here don't have context beyond what we've read in the agenda book, and particularly those that may be viewing have no context. And it would help before we brought up opposition to hear from you.
Okay.
Thank you. So, sir, you may go ahead at this time.
Okay. So the land is, it was two lots that were consolidated to one. I did know that the client, prior to retaining me for the services of the rezoning, did an application for the rezoning, but I was told that it was removed without prejudice. So they contacted me and asked me to continue their application for them or to resubmit an application on their behalf. The property, it encompasses a home right now. It is Zone R30. We're asking for O&amp;I. They would like to do like an event space there. They would like to have, and keep to the original structure and the frame of the home that is currently there, and add on an additional 3,200 square feet on the back to kind of give it Borenhouse-style setting. And she would like to be able to use the property for like a wedding venue or retirement parties. She would like to do bridal showers, you know, things like that of that nature there. In the past, from what I was told and based on the recommendations of the staff from the last time that the application was submitted, it was told to them that they needed to, you know, put up a fence and do certain things to the property that were going to be aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors in the neighborhood. I, you know, know that they did that as well. I know that the residents from Lookout Mountain have, you know, opposition to this rezoning, and I'm sensitive to that. I spoke to quite a few of them because in the letter that I mailed out, I included my phone number and email address personally and spoke with some of them. Some of them, we were able to speak about the issue and release them from having so much frustration towards it. And then on the other side, some were just totally against. And we understood the nature of the beast in dealing with that. My clients were forthcoming with me and told me that in the past, they had an issue with Lookout Mountain. And, you know, I did as much as I could in my power to speak with them about it. In the last meeting that we had, which was on December the 6th, it was said that he got the letter, you know, one of the people on the opposing team got a letter two days prior to the December the 6th meeting. That is not true because as you all know in the rezoning packet, we're supposed to do a mailing and a certificate of mailing as well to certify that the mailings went out. So that was an untrue statement that was made because I had had the mailing done a month before we came in. And I had spoken to some of the residents. So, you know, that's where we are with the case. I don't have my files and everything like that to give you a more in-depth of what I've written, but that's where we are.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay.
The opposition will now have time to speak. All of you have 10 minutes in total, so just be mindful of the number of speakers that we have.
Hello, I'm Ron Jelica. I'm a resident and HOA board member in the Haven at Lost Mountain, a 55 and over community located at the intersection of Dallas Highway and Ward Farm Road. The eastern border of our property is approximately one-tenth of a mile from the western border of the applicant's private property and therefore in close proximity. I presented the opposition position at the December 6th rezoning hearing. Mr. Tutt, two weeks ago, presented the case for the applicant. The applicant did not present at that hearing. Mr. Tutt, who appeared to be very articulate and very intimately knowledgeable of all aspects of this case, he presented for the, to the zoning board. The result of that, after that meeting, the zoning board ruled unanimously to recommend denial of that application, and we certainly support that. I can't comment any, any further on that because I want to present our case. Okay. The Haven with 20 homes and adjacent Ward Farm at Lost Mountain Community with 23 homes are located in a desirable wooded residential area close to shopping, just close to shopping parks and public services. These homes are well-maintained and landscaped. The residents moved here to enjoy life in this corridor, which is zoned residential and is designated as VLDR, Very Low Density Residential for Future Land Use. We oppose the applicant's proposal to build an event center close to our homes. Our concerns regard safety, quality of life, and harm to the large financial investments each of us have in our homes. Regarding safety, the proposed event center is located on the north side of Dallas Highway in a traffic corridor, which includes intersections at Midway Road, Ward Farm Road, and Mars Hill Road. These are heavily traveled roads with busy intersections. Additionally, the Ward Farm intersection includes the only entrance and exit for the large Lost Mountain Park and recreational complex, which includes numerous baseball fields, soccer fields, walking paths, tennis courts, children's playgrounds, et cetera, in addition to the West Cobb Senior Center. A large amount of families and seniors must share this relatively high-speed intersection with the regular commuter traffic. There is only one entrance or exit for the proposed event center on Dallas Highway. All entering traffic must approach on westbound Dallas Highway. With no deceleration lane, the inbound traffic will need to slow or stop on 55 mile an hour Dallas Highway and make a sharp right into the event center. If several cars are turning into the center, it is likely that one or more will be temporarily stopped on the highway in the path of oncoming, oncoming traffic on westbound Dallas Highway. Anyone who misses the turn into the center will either continue on Dallas Highway, making U-turns at Ward Farm Road, going back and making another U-turn at, at Midway Road, and try again to get in. Other people who miss the entrance to the center will turn right upward Farm Road to see if they can find a back way to, to get to the event center. That would be logical, but there is no such way to get back there. They will simply circle futilely through the neighborhoods and cul-de-sacs in this area until they go down and go back and do the U-turns to, to get to the center. This increases the risk to senior strolling or walking dogs on signal circle and to those walking or even children playing in the dead end cul-de-sacs at Ward Farm Road. Chart two, please. Our biggest safety concern occurs when an event center party concludes. All partiers who may have had a drink or two at a wedding reception, I know I do, they will get in their cars at relatively the same time, 75 cars, and queue up to leave the venue. All this traffic must, without an acceleration lane, merge immediately onto westbound 55 mile an hour Dallas Highway. Just picture this. The applicant is there on the right little orange spot that is there. That's the driveway. Seventy, up to 75 cars will be queued up, and there's oncoming traffic in two lanes on Dallas Highway coming at them. As those cars queue up and proceed west on Dallas Highway, the cars coming down will see them and merge into the left-hand lane. Then we'll have traffic in the left-hand lane and the event traffic in the right-hand lane. The problem is, most of the event traffic does not want to go west on Dallas Highway. They want to go east on Dallas Highway to get back to Marietta where, you know, that denser area where the most of them came from. They will have one-tenth of a mile to accelerate into the right-hand lane and then merge into the left-hand lane where that other traffic is already there. Once they are in the left-hand lane, they will have to immediately slow down in front of that traffic so that they can enter the turning lane onto, at the intersection of Ward Farm Road to do their U-turn. I think you can see the possibility of accordion accidents, rearenders, whatever. But the thing is, also the traffic who's still in the right-hand lane are still going to want to get over to make this U-turn. Problem is, there's a traffic light there and the lane, the turnaround lane, the turning lane into, on Ward Farm Road can accommodate maybe seven or eight cars. Once you've got seven or eight cars in that lane, any additional cars will be stopped in the left-hand lane on Dallas Highway. Basically, the whole thing will be stopped, will be stopped up. The chance for accidents is very high. Other people leaving will realize that this is a mess, and they will turn upward Farm Road into the subdivisions so that they can turn around there and go and make their turn onto Dallas Highway to go back. They'll be doing this at 10 o'clock in the evening, whenever people are there. And I can tell you the amount of horn honking, brake squealing, whatever, as all these cars tend to compete for space in this area is very, very dangerous. Again, this will be at nine to 10 o'clock, but most everybody in the 55 and over community is in bed. Most of them are in bed at nine to 10 o'clock. Please go to chart three.
Sir, is letting you probably have about three more minutes.
Three minutes. Thank you very much. Turn that over. This, this is just two accidents that happened last month. I heard them from my home. I went down and looked at them. This is at Dallas Highway and Ward Farm Road. First one is a rearender. Second one, just typical rearender. You see people standing on the road, Dallas Highway. Same thing with the second one. And in this one, a car jumped the berm and is facing the wrong way on the other side of the road. And this is during the daylight hours, light traffic, nothing to do with a bunch of people leaving an event center. All right. Regarding quali, that's enough on safety. Quality of life, the traffic, music, and other related activities will increase the noise level in this immediate vicinity. Many Haven residents are in their mid-70s or 80s. Many are frail or in diminishing states of health. They do not want the additional noise and congestion here. Our residents include some retired deputies, retired public and private sector workers who moved to the Haven to enjoy, enjoy a more tranquil and relaxed lifestyle in their later years. They've earned it. They moved into an area that was zoned residential and assumed that any future development would be residential in nature. Financial impacts. The largest investment most people have is in their homes. The 20 homes in the Haven and 23 homeowners in the adjacent Ward Farm Community have all invested heavily, much of their life savings, to procure homes and fulfill their dreams of living in this desirable residential area. Nearby business development will reduce the values of these homes, harming all residents. I'm sorry that the applicant did not understand the zoning restrictions when making the decision to buy their land, but that is not our problem. We should not have to suffer any consequences to make the applicant whole. At the December 6th rezoning hearing, the planning commission concluded that the application under consideration was not in conformity with the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan and that its approval would have an incompatible and adverse impact on the current and future development of this area. Unanimous decision, we agree with it. In conclusion, we look to our elected representatives, their appointees, and their employees to act in the best interests of and for the protection of our residents over the efforts of others wanting to change our existing codes for their personal gain. We ask that you make a final decision to deny this application, a decision that would support the vision of the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan, confirm the recommendation of the zoning board, and address the concerns of the residents. There's nothing more to add to this case. Everything that has been, can be spoken, has been, but now by myself and two weeks ago, quite articulately by Mr. Hut, or Mr. Tutt, excuse me. That's all I've got to say. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Bill, how much more time is there?
Three seconds.
Okay. So, presuming that you are representing everyone here in opposition?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, very good. I see some nods. All right. With that, Commissioner Gammel.
Mr. Jelica, before you leave, can I ask you a question, please?
I'm sorry. Yes?
Has the applicant ever reached out to you asking or requesting a community meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The only, the only, as I stated at the, at the hearing... The only, the only, as I stated at the, at the hearing, the only communication I ever got from the consulting company representing the applicant was a letter, postmark from Atlanta Metro Post Office on October 31st, and I do have that, asking, asking that people support this rezoning application, a brief, a brief bit about who the applicants were, and that if we had any questions or concerns, we could call a phone number. I received that in November, about the 3rd or 4th of November. That is the only communication I have ever received regarding this issue.
Thank you. Thank you. John, I have a question for you. Mr. Tutt made the comment that previous staff comments had recommended for offense, et cetera, to be put up in order to make this more appropriate. Is that a true comment?
No, the staff recommendation last time was for denial.
And has this come before the board, previous to that last one? I think the one application before was in 2018?
I do remember the one, excuse, pardon me, I do remember the one that we had last year from Mr. Huff, but I don't remember anything past that, though, but it's possible.
Okay, because I remember there was one in 2018 that was a carryover when I took office in 2019, and staff denial on that one was, or recommendation was denial as So with that, I would like to make a motion to deny Z 76 of 2022.
All right, I'll second for discussion. Are there any comments or questions? Commissioner Sheffield?
I just had a follow-up question with John regarding the fence. So was that staff recommendation or not? I don't know that I got your answer.
No, that was not a staff recommendation. Our recommendation was just to deny it, period.
Okay, I got that part, but I just, okay, thank you.
With or without prejudice?
With or without?
With or without prejudice?
So it'd be with prejudice? It would be, it would be presumed with prejudice if it's denied? There's a question up here for denying with or without prejudice. Without prejudice would enable the applicant to come back within 12-month period? If the commissioner just denies it, it's presumed that it has prejudice, and another application can't come forward for another 12 months. I think that's what the motion is. I was certainly amenable to us holding this application prior to us hearing it, but after hearing it, I mean, I think the merits of both sides of the applicant and the opposition were clear. So I feel prepared to, to vote today. I don't know how other commissioners feel.
I mean, I certainly feel like I can make a decision on this one. I am, I will support moving forward with a vote. However, just out of respect on the process, if there was a request to continue that was communicated immediately, et cetera, I didn't know if there wanted to, if there wanted, if there was a desire to hear the full presentation, but... So, this applicant has not reached out to me for this application, so I have had no communication with the applicant or the representative. We've had the policy that information has to be received by Wednesday at noon. That has been known, you know, forthcoming. They understood that. That was the same rules that was, you know, in place three previous times that they've made applications. So, I am not willing to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner?
Commissioner, has there been any communication at all? You mentioned that this one has, it's been on for several months now, and I understand that there has not been any communication with the community, and you mentioned that you had not talked with the applicant. Have you spoken with the applicant's representative or...?
So, the last time staff and I talked to the applicant was in 2019, when I had the carryover case, when they had the same application. They applied it for it in 2018, and it was a carryover to when I came into office. Staff and I met with the applicant, advised them, you know, what staff comments meant, you know, that this was against the future land use plan. It was not, it would be spot zoning. We had that discussion with them. We gave them some ideas of what they could use with their property that would be in compliance with the future land use plan and the underlying zoning. They then had a second application made when I was in office at that time, and again, we spoke to the representative that was representing them at that time as well, shared the same conversation. So here we are now, a third time, with no communication, we're just here with the hearing. But staff comments and all three of the applications have remained the same.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. The board has moved, or the board has supported denying this application 5-0. Thank you. Commissioners, let's take a break until 11:00 a.m., please. Thank you.
Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. I will turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, to help us continue our hearing for today.
All right, thank you. It's my understanding, Madam Chair and Board, that the one case that was pulled off consent, OB 68, the applicant has spoken to the person who opposed, and they're no longer opposed to it, so they've left. So if it's okay with the board, I'm going to read this back into the record, and the board can vote to put it back on consent.
Very good. Thank you.
Other business item number 68 of 2022 is to consider a reduction of required minimum public road frontage for lots 1 through 3 for McKinley Homes LLC from 75 feet to zero feet, properties located on the west side of West Hantown Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on November 10, 2022. That shows the road frontage reductions. Number two, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. And number three, no further subdivision of the property. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 68?
No.
The director says no one opposed.
All right, Commissioner Gamble.
Cat. Yes, Parks?
I hope you all have a wonderful holiday and a Merry Christmas. Thank you for a wonderful year. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Parks.
Oh, my goodness.
Now, Commissioner.
It's all because we're doing this now and not making him wait.
He got back on consent.
I know, right?
So with that, I'd like to make an motion to place OB 68 with all staff comments and recommendations as read into by John Peterson as approved.
Okay. I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Parks.
Item last on the agenda is other business item number 65 of 2022, which is to consider a stipulation amendment for Mid-Atlantic Commercial Properties LLC regarding rezoning application, Z157 of 2000, for property located at the northwest intersection of Johnson Ferry Road and Waterfront Drive in Land Lot 470 of the 16th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 65? Please stand up, raise your hands.
Yes, we have two.
Two. Let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
John, is there anyone here in favor of this application?
Is there anyone here in favor of this other business item? Please stand and raise your hand.
Besides the applicant.
Is there anyone here in support of other business item number 65?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Good morning. I represent Mid-Atlantic Properties. It's a subsidiary of Morgan Companies, a developer that's been in business for over 45 years that develops property up and down the eastern seaboard. So this-
Sir, would you mind stating your name, please?
My name is David Weinstein. So this property was rezoned to NRC in the year 2000, so about 22 years ago. I guess with that rezoning, there was a stipulation because it was being developed for Walgreens that it can only be used as a pharmacy. Walgreens, the client who I present, is a preferred developer for Walgreens. They're under contract to purchase the property, so as part of their due diligence, this has come up about the restriction solely as a pharmacy. And we're asking to remove the restriction that it can only be used as a pharmacy. And just briefly talking with someone from the opposition, they were saying, well, they're against it because they want pharmacies to remain. So we're not saying that it won't be used as a pharmacy in the future. The plan is actually to redevelop this 1.3 acre site to a multiple use type of development. And Walgreens has even expressed taking a smaller type of pharmacy there in their new concept. I guess, you know, back 20 years ago, the concepts were more of these larger box types of uses, different, you know, economics and rent at that time. But now with development costs and things going online, they don't need as big as a footprint nowadays, so they're kind of, you know, reducing the size of the square footage, which is pretty common in retail developments. So we're asking to remove that restriction. Initially, we were asking just, you know, the property is zoned NRC, so just allowing uses under NRC, which I think is appropriate, just considering it's in this, you know, retail corridor, and obviously the NRC zoning is there for a reason. So, you know, it seemed like there were some uses in there that after speaking with the East Cobb Civic Association members that they wanted to prohibit. So we had had a very productive dialogue with them and talking about some of those uses that they wanted to prohibit. We actually, I think they gave us a list of, I don't know, maybe 20 to 30 prohibited uses, and we're in agreement with every single one of them except for one. So we were very close to submitting a stipulation amendment with an agreeable use of prohibited uses. The one that we wanted to keep in here was a, under the code, it's called fast food with drive-through. Some people don't like the word "fast food," so, you know, we use the word kind of quick serve restaurant or fast casual. We don't know what, Walgreens still is under lease for this property till, I believe, 2027. So we don't know what the potential uses are going to be, but we know because it's on a hard corner, it has a light, it's a very well-located piece of real estate, that in order to make a redevelopment work here that's viable, a restaurant with fast food is a user that can pay those type of rents. So we're not talking about a kind of just what people think is a dirty word, "fast food." I mean, we're talking about a high-end restaurant use and kind of all the fast casual concepts nowadays in the post-COVID world, you know, they want a drive-through. That's just part of, you know, the retail plans nowadays that they have. People don't want to get out of their car, what have you. So that's one use we wanted to keep for flexibility going forward. Again, we're not even 100% sure that it needs to be a restaurant with fast food. It could just be a medical use. It could be the smaller Walgreens footprint with, you know, other medical users. But in order to make this big of an investment in this property, you know, multiple millions of dollars, they need that flexibility. And if they can't proceed, if they don't have that flexibility, unfortunately, you know, they just won't proceed with the property. And I'm afraid that won't be good for the community because, as you may have seen, there's a lot of empty pharmacies around that are just empty vacant boxes. And because of the fact that they're so large and development costs are so high, and they're just valuable pieces of property because they're on the hard corners and the lights, they sit vacant for a long time. And this is a client and a developer that has the financial ability and relationships to be able to redevelop it into something that I think would be a net benefit for the community. So respectfully, we would ask for that restriction on the sole use of pharmacy to be removed. And we're happy to agree to the list that Rick and I can submit, just with the omission of the fast food restriction. And in fact, my client agreed to put a square footage limitation on the size of the restaurant in that space to help alleviate any concerns, so. I don't know if I need to reserve time to speak if there's any opposition, but just wanted to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from opposition. And just be mindful of time. You'll have a total of 10 minutes.
I'm president of East Cobb Civic Association and ECCA manager for OB 65. The applicant is interested in purchasing the 1.283 acres at 3033 Johnson Ferry Road. Let's call it the Walgreen property. The applicant has told ECCA that Walgreens has approximately two years left on their lease and may not renew. In the application, the applicant states that they would like to remove the drugstore, pharmacy use only presently attached to the property. Proposed future uses include, but not limited to, drugstore, pharmacy, bakery, restaurant, medical uses. In other words, the applicant, if approved as is with the words "not limited to," would allow all NRC uses for this property. The Walgreens property backs up to what will be the sole access to the gated RA5 residential community portion of the Z72 community. You can see right here where the Walgreens is, right here where the McDonald's is, here's the intersection for Johnson Ferry Road and the, and Waterfront. And right here is going to be a gate for the gated community. So you're going to have this little stretch of Waterfront Drive, and you're going to have the opposing driveways there for McDonald's and whatever else goes into the Walgreen Skipping through much of my presentation, because frankly, we have been negotiating this list of prohibited uses for this property right up until yesterday afternoon. And the list I gave you right now is the list that we've agreed to, with the exception of the fast food restaurant, which is the last thing on the list. There are three major concerns in allowing unrestricted NRC use on the Walgreens property. One is traffic, the other is noise, and the other is compatibility with the neighborhood. The issues were looked at in 2000 when the Walgreen property was rezoned, and care was taken at that time to prevent additional traffic problems on Waterfront Drive caused by McDonald's drive-through, which already existed when this property was rezoned, as well as to find uses for the Walgreens property that were compatible with residential area to the west. I'd like to add one other thing to this other than noise, and that's light pollution for those townhouses that will be backing up to this property. This is the reason that the Walgreens property was rezoned use-specific in 2000. ECCA has had several conversations and email exchanges with the applicant, and as I mentioned, we have come up, come with an agreement of all the stipulations, with the exception of the fast food stipulation. We don't want, we're concerned about the added traffic to that area backing up because of the short distance between that intersection and the gate that's going to be for the community. So I'm going to move quickly through this. Not all NRC uses work for this property due to the close proximity of the residential neighborhood, the closeness of the access point to Johnson Ferry Road, and a high volume of traffic that already exists on Waterfront Drive. Let me also mention to you that this is, these two waterfront entrances for Walgreens and McDonald's are the only all-access points for those. The access from Johnson Ferry is a right-in, right-out because there's a divide on that whole section of Johnson Ferry. So that's another point, if you will. If the Board of Commissioners approves OB 65, ECCA recommends that the ECCA list updated today to the Board of Commissioners of prohibited uses be attached to this property as a stipulation. And if the property is redeveloped, any new site plan should come back to the Board of Commissioners for approval, or at least the appropriate district commissioner have sign-off on any new development. Finally, all staff recommendations and all other stipulations on this property where not in conflict should remain in effect. Thank you for your time. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rachel Bruce. I am here on behalf of the Josh Community Group, established by Commissioner Richardson. We respectfully oppose OB 6522 because our community believes that we are at a significant risk of losing businesses that are essential to the health and safety of our community. Our Josh area is really ages over 40 years old. According to the CDC, one in seven people over 40 have at least one prescription filled every 30 days. With the additional homes that are going to be built with the Z72 and potentially also the Z55, we think that it could create a problem where it's going to create a significant strain on our pharmacy system and could create, you know, some issues in our community accessing prescriptions, especially the Walgreens is the only pharmacy left that has a drive-through. So, you know, we have Publix, we have Kroger, but none of them have drive-through. You all have to walk in the store, same with the Walmart. So that's the main reason we oppose it. We have not been approached. We have not had the chance to discuss, like the ECCA has, with the landowner and their attorney. We would be open to discussions if we would be reached out to. And frankly, I am surprised that we have not been reached out to so far because we are supposed to be here for the redevelopment of this area. So as I said, we asked the Board of Commissioners to deny this request and hopefully, or at least potentially, push it on a little bit further so that we can discuss with the landowner a little bit more about what they plan for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's no one else here in opposition. So before I turn things over to the Commissioner, I'll ask John for what staff's recommendation is.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the board approve the request subject to the proposed site plan contained in your other business packet. Permitted uses shall be a drugstore, a bank, restaurant, professional offices, or limited retail uses only. Fire Department comments or recommendations, Cobb DOT comments or recommendations, and all previous conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And yeah, that was actually going to be my question is if, David, you had had a chance to speak with the Josh Committee, because I know that's, I referenced both and when you first reached out. And I know that things got busy with our office for me to, like, personally supply that, but I know I had also provided that instruction, so I don't know if-
So, no, I apologize. I think when we spoke, I do remember you mentioning that there was a Josh Committee. I didn't, I couldn't find a contact for them. Obviously, we sent out mailers my information, and I apologize that, you know, we didn't get to discuss this at all. But I do want to address her concerns. I know we have been in a lot of discussions with ECCA about it, and thank you for putting me, pointing me in that direction, about her concerns about, you know, getting rid of the pharmacy. So Walgreens is leaving. We don't have control over that. They're telling us they're leaving, so we would love to keep them. And my client has, you know, they're a preferred developer for them, and they are in discussions as this property gets redeveloped to include them in that redevelopment plan. And my client would be more than happy to continue the dialogue with the Josh Community to make sure that whatever uses they want to see, if they're economically viable, that they can be there. A couple more things I just wanted to point out. There's two adjacent parcels on Johnson Ferry Road that they would like to acquire with this development. This is the first step in the process. If this doesn't happen, then they can't acquire those two things. So in terms of access, that Rick mentioned, in terms of the right-in, right-out, and I think it was mentioned that if we redevelop it, they want to close that access point on Johnson Ferry Road unless we put in a D cell lane, but just this parcel doesn't have enough. The plan would be to acquire those additional parcels, put in a D cell lane, so there would be sufficient access to address traffic and other items. In regards to continuing this for later, my client only has it under contract, so we've already extended that contract numerous times, so I don't know if we'll be able to get another extension to do it. So they just may not have the luxury of time to move forward here if it does get extended. So, and then it's, the whole development would be kind of dead in the water, and against, I think, what she was saying in terms of keeping a pharmacy and more, you know, uses there. Another thing I just want to mention in terms of, and just want to preserve this in case any future appeals potentially happen later, the constitutional challenge of having a parcel be zoned for just one use. Obviously, you know, zoning is allowed under the Constitution to promote the general welfare and safety of the community, but it needs to be consistently and uniformly applied to surrounding properties. So under this NRC zoning, you have fast food uses directly adjacent to the property. You have fast food uses in NRC across the road from the property. So it would be arbitrary and capricious to say you can't do fast food here when there's literally, it's in the zoning for it, and you have adjacent uses. So, you know, we would like to obviously have a productive and, you know, come to an agreement with everybody and not force anything down or take that path, but just to preserve that, you know, which we have to do procedurally for later. And I just want the record to reflect that we see a constitutional challenge here if we don't get that particular use. And again, we came in here just asking to go back to the NRC altogether, but after having those conversations, we're fine with adding those additional prohibited uses. I mean, we've worked, Rick and I have spent hours, you know, talking to come to that agreement, and we're very, very close. So if we could just kind of move forward, but just with that one change to it, I think it'd be a win-win for everybody. And the Josh Community would also kind of see the benefit of having a redeveloped parcel. And I think it'd be a benefit to the neighborhood that's being built. They don't want to see an empty box there, right? They want to see other uses that would benefit that community, so.
There was a question raised about the, and I admit this is a unique case. That was one of my first comments on this, but the constitutionality about prohibitive zoning on single use, is that something-
I believe the applicant's just making, he's required to do it as part of his presentation in order to preserve that as a right if he wants to be able to appeal whatever decision the board has made.
Understood. Understood. Thank you. All right. That certainly answers my original question. And I can't necessarily speak to the contracting delay issue that you brought up, but my intent, just kind of seeing the correspondence that came back when I was reviewing all the notes around this from my civic associations, had kind of ascertained that there probably hadn't been conversation with the Josh Committee, and I wanted to make sure that there was an attempt to have an exhaustive complete list, considering there's no real site plan or intended use being proposed here, to at least provide that input from the community and to have the considerations, considering Z72 is a major development, the Josh, the small area plan, and the architectural design guidelines associated with that. I do understand that most of that can be accomplished with putting in the stipulation for it to come back through other business for site plan review if there are any changes. That being said, though, I am inclined to motion to hold this until February, until a complete list is put together, because this is a unique kind of situation where it's a single-use zoning versus, yeah, I mean, it must be versus it can't be is a little bit unique. I haven't seen that, and I don't know if other areas around the county have that. But, yeah, I, this is, I think this is a great attempt. I know that there's still, there's still debate on some of these items, and like I said, it does not include the Josh Committee's input as well. So I would like to hold it until February, and that is my motion.
I mean, just to speak to that issue. So in other circumstances, I think we would totally be on board with that, but really, like I said, it's the contractual timing that they've already, the seller's given us extensions because this came up later in the process. I think the seller didn't even know that this uncovered their property like that, which is unique. I've never, you know, I've done zonings all over the metro area, I've never encountered-
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry. Did you just make a motion?
I was going, I was going to-
If she made a motion, then there needs to be follow-up from the board for a second. That's not, it's not part of a discussion at this point until you ask for him to weigh in. So if you made a motion, is there a second, Commissioner?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the board, or would you like to have the applicant continue, Commissioner?
I have comments.
Commissioner Burle did. I just want to ask, give me, I just want to follow back up with Richardson. Do you want the applicant to continue, or do you want to hear from your peers?
I did want to hear his one comment to the contractual barrier, but succinct, I do want to hear what my colleagues have to say on the board here.
Yeah, we're just kind of at the end. We've already asked for extensions on this contract from the seller, so I don't know if we can get more time. I mean, obviously, I'll find out and we'll try.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Burle?
Do you know the plans for the existing building? Is it a tear-down, or are you going to use the square footage in place and the drive-through in place, or you don't know?
At this point, it's just too early in the process. I think there's a bunch of potential use. I mean, if another pharmacy were to come in here and just say, "We want to take the whole building," I think that's a possibility. That's probably unlikely. The most likely scenario would be to acquire those adjacent parcels, put that D cell lane, have a larger, not large center, but a multi-use building that's more modern to accommodate the smaller pharmacy, other type medical uses, things of that nature, maybe a small kind of quick serve restaurant, something like that, so.
But you will keep a drive-through? You want to keep a drive-through?
Yeah, a drive, just retailers nowadays-
But we don't know what that uses, so, okay.
Yeah.
And I had a question for Ms. Bruce, if she could come back up.
Sure. Before, I just want to make sure it's clear on what my motion was, because it wasn't just to hold, because I was going to, it was-
to hold, because I was gonna, it was just, it was the idea of a motion to hold, to come back in February with a complete list of stipulations in consideration for this Josh Small Area Plan and the architectural guidelines. So I just wanted to put that for everybody.
Do you second that, Commissioner? Okay, thank you. So we'll substitute that motion.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Well, I guess if anybody has questions...
Can we substitute him? Then we'll come...
I'm sorry, I was thinking of an architectural, I mean, the applicant's made it very clear he doesn't have a site plan yet, so you'd be informed of architectural guidelines, but we don't have a site plan, didn't have any building.
If there's any change in notion that that, whatever plan is being presented, it would incorporate those elements for the discussion. You said you had a question for Rachel, that's...
Yeah, but if, you might as well ask if there are any more for him.
Okay. Any other for the applicant?
Rachel. I have a clarifying question for the applicant. You said Walmart is, excuse me, Walgreens is definitely leaving the property. Okay, and just to, again, get some clarity on what Commissioner Burrow asked. You don't know if the property's gonna be grazed or not, but you want to keep the drive-through. I don't see how you would...
When we say keep the drive-through, I mean, in a future redevelopment, if it were completely razed and redeveloped, that future use would have a drive-through. Whether it's for pharmacy, fast food, probably both, or, you know, it just depends on what those uses are.
Okay, and I have an exhaustive list here of uses that I believe ECCA said they wanted, except for drive-through, fast food restaurants, and you're looking to add the drive.
So that list is a list of prohibited uses, so anything under NRC would be permitted. Those are uses under NRC that they want to exclude. Yeah, we're in agreement, except for the drive-through, fast food.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, thank you. David?
Hi, Rachel. I just wanted to know, I know that you stated that the applicant did not reach out to you as the Josh Committee.
Correct.
You've seen the list from East Cobb Civic Association?
We have not until just right now I've seen it. No one else in the group has seen it.
Okay. I was just curious if you were agreeable to that list without the...
I would have to review it with the other group members, and we would have to take a vote on it, yeah.
So I think Commissioner Richardson's motion to hold so that you can, your committee can also have input would be...
Yes.
What I would support.
Yeah, that would be agreeable. We would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to also add, this is a very exhaustive list, and I was just wondering, Commissioner Richardson, if maybe you would consider also for the final use to be approved by the district commissioner? Yeah. Just in piggybacking on that, final use or uses, you say there's a single use because this is not the first zoning where we've contemplated zoning for this specific use only. We've done that before, but, you know, I think the applicant was diligent. He really gave you notice that if you were gonna do that, that he is preserving a constitutional challenge to question that, but this is not the first time.
Understood, understood. And, I mean, it's currently the single use right now.
Is it single use under the zoning? Oh, for the Walgreens.
They're trying to change it.
For the pharmacy.
Yeah, for a pharmacy use.
I see, yes, I received that. Thank you, Commissioner, yep, yep, yep. Yes, so the consti, I mean, you knew what it was.
They're just trying to remove...
They had no, I mean, he's putting you on notice, but they had noticed that it was a single-use zoning as well, so, I mean, to say it's arbitrary, capricious.
Well, that's part of the discussion, is that as a part of the due diligence, it came up that that was the one use that this parcel could have, and so that's the case.
That's prior to you. Sorry, sir, we'll call you in already.
Yeah, is to have that stipulation removed, and then we have to consider what is that, what's the impact to the overall master plan and future plans to them. So if there will be a removal, it's not just gonna be a blanket removal.
I received that.
It'll be a removal and addition.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
I'm in support of your motion.
Okay, I support your motion, but I have a couple questions. John, the applicant stated or alluded that this had been continued. Is this the first time that this was scheduled to be heard, or has this been held? So today was the first time being held? Okay, just for clarification. My concern is, and why, I can understand why they're asking for a fast food restaurant not to be placed here. And I understand why it was zoned for this use specific. With the DOT comments and just kind of looking here at the aerial, they're really not going to be able to put in a D cell lane. Hence, if there was, if there's not space to put a D cell lane, if we were looking at this the first time, essentially, we would be having a fast food commercial restaurant being accessed from a residential road, which would more than likely not happen because of the access and the infrastructure. So I would, and I also understand from the applicant's presentation that he's looking at purchasing additional parcels, but even if he's looking to purchase additional parcels, we can only look at this for today. So I, right now, I agree with not having the restaurant there just because of the fact that they're not gonna be able to put in the D cell lane and make it safe for the residents to come in and come out. I can also understand why the Board back in 2000 restricted it to only this use. So if by holding it gives the applicant additional time to have those conversations, but then to also see if he is gonna acquire more parcels and then maybe amend his, or amend his application, I would be open to that.
I just want to make sure the Board has information. I mean, the NRC across the street on the waterfront is a McDonald's, so there is access to a, off of waterfront to a fast food restaurant.
But they also have access off of Johnson's Ferry. And DOT comments for this application is pretty much if he can't put in a D cell lane, he has to close the access on Johnson's Ferry. And that was to what my comment was, is because if you see where the driveway is, he doesn't have the right-of-way to put in a D cell lane. So that was what my point was, is, you know, he's looking at potentially having to close this access, which would make it different from the McDonald's across the street. Any other commentary? Okay, well, there was a motion and a second. We clarified the motion.
All right. I'll call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. John, does this conclude today's zoning hearing?
That thus concludes your agenda, Madam Chair. And since you recognize me, I do want to acknowledge that Dave Braden's here, and this is his last zoning hearing ever. He is retiring.
Lucky Dave.
Don't say that, he'll be back. He'll be back.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, for everything you've done. Yes. With that, Commissioners, I believe our hearing is adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.